Alright, you're sitting up here on the laptop in front of us. We're gonna make sure we get some chances to get you in there. So Monahan, Mark, and when I do. It's not live. Hey Mark, if you'd approved the whiteboard three years ago, we could've got you on video.
There we go.
There you go.
Right here. That's kinda stuff about a whiteboard.
We might need to turn up the volume so he can hear everything.
Mark is, there may be some times where like, I'll probably come to you. I'm just gonna come here and go last on just about everything here. I'll run through regular roll call without, without any all in favors tonight. More kind of like your would've been your call. Alright?
Yep.
Alright, well, I think with that, we're gonna get started and we're gonna start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you stand, Mark? Good. Alright, we'll kick off with roll call.
Okay, Manny, here. Brenneman?
Here.
Keel?
Here.
Glanzer?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
And Monahan.
Here.
Alright, with that, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Who will you? Motion by Jones, second by Glanzer.
That'd be awesome.
Alright, Wubba, Jones?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Glanzer?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And Monahan.
Yep.
Alright, perfect. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from 5:5, 2020? Keel?
Second.
Nelson? Discussion? Wubba? Glanzer?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan.
Yep.
And we have motion to approve those submitted to the panel.
So, second.
Jones and Nelson, any discussion?
Mitch, what's the 3,186 from McPherson Road? I thought we were done down there.
We're working on the Walmart for that with FEMA. That's an application we had to send for FEMA to, now that the project's done, to finish that off with them.
I thought you were done with us.
Well, we still have that to wrap up.
Thanks.
That's the only question I had.
Any other questions? Alright, Wubba, Brenneman?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Glanzer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And Monahan.
Yep.
Alright. Alright, next we're gonna move to public comment. Do we have any public comments on any non-agenda items? Come on up, make sure you say your name so she's got it.
Okay.
Yep. Depends, if it's an agenda item, we can come up for later, but if it's a non-agenda item, not possible.
I'm Jeffrey Allen Bossman with JBS Concessions. I have property in 106 Northwestern over here where the food concession stand is. I just wanted to make sure, I'll let you guys know that, you know, I'm, you know, I love Hartford. My parents had a business here for 30 years and I think that some people around town have a problem with it. I wanna make sure the city, you guys, yourself, don't have a problem with it. Because I went about every, you know, every inspection from fire, electric, health, everything that hasn't been done, make sure it's sitting, you know, on an old existing slab I had there. But then, I mean, me and Teresa went through, I thought I had everything straightened out on that. And then now, I got a letter on the RVs that I have sitting there. My business is JBS Concessions, plus I run another business out of there, Key Auto Sales. Kinda on hold, but I still carry my dealer's license, everything else. He did call me back tonight. There was, I think, a bit of a misunderstanding. The one trailer that's sitting out front, I was just de-winterizing it, it was sitting there, there's nobody living in it. I have numerous other trailers that come through town, bunk houses. I'm kinda think why people are noticing more is because I'm here right now, I'm not on the road. Usually I'm gone, you know, I don't want, but I've had two complaints to the, wanting to know if I have a permit to the Health Department. But otherwise, as far as the news.
Jeff, can I stop you in regards to Midway Cafe?
Yeah.
In regards to Midway Cafe? You said, okay, I just, you didn't mention Midway before, and I wanna make sure everybody else here knows what you're talking about. Talking about the Health Department.
Yeah, I cleaned it up around there. Took me three years to get rid of all the, I brought rock in, cleared the lot. I just wanna make sure that it's alright, that you guys understand my business, you know, when I come, normally I'm not here. I'm around here right now and I'm gonna have to have some guys start doing a few things. There will be people around there and there's gonna be trailers. But I, he understood now that the one trailer was the neighbor living over there, they were on self-quarantine. Called me, I told him, them people were self-quarantined and because they come from Minnesota, they had to quarantine for 14 days, they gave them a, you know, a card. But what I'm mainly getting back to is, is on my property, I feel that I've kept it clean, done everything for, you know, sometimes a carnival gets a bad rap, you know, and I've, you know, I'm a Chamber member, I donate, I'm for the Jamboree Committee, I do this and that, I try to do as much as I possibly can for the community. Well, somebody out there has called the State Inspector, the Health Inspector, and, and he, I've already been inspected with him and everything was fine with that, so I don't know who has a problem with it, if it's some other business in town, but I wanna make sure that the, you know, that the city, you guys, don't have any problem with that going, because it's a temporary thing, but the reason why I've done it was because on that road, it just showed me that there's possibility, there's, there's opportunity for something like that right there. I mean, Kelloland, everything was positive, I mean, I would say the news, everything that's been done on it has been positive.
Yeah, Jeff, but you only got a few minutes for the section two. As far as I know, everything that you need to do, you've done. Kinda looking at Teresa, it sounds like every, you know, any permits or any things that need to happen.
Yes, it was, that went up, I contacted Jeff and, you know, it's a permitted use there to sell food and so, it's a change of use than what it was before, so I said, you just need to fill out an application with the city. I can administer, do it right in the office, okay, it doesn't have to go to a board. But he got, returned that right away to me and he's, he's got his certificate from the Department of Health. He's got me electrical inspection, I mean, he put all the paperwork with it, so I mean, he's, Citywide is good to go, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it's, because somebody evidently doesn't like it, you're gonna have that. And, but I've tried to clean it up, I mean, laid rock down, and as far as the house trailers there, I guess that was mainly a misunderstanding. He told me to just rip it up now after I talked to him today.
Him meaning Brian?
Brian, yes, Brian. He said that, I said, you know, I'm not gonna mention, there's numerous other ones around town, but when I, you know, on this property, I thought it was allowed for me to, you know, I have a dealer's license for one. It's commercial property, and there was one other question on the property. I used to be industrial. I don't know when it got changed, cause I'm in and out of town, but now it's community commercial. I have, when I originally bought that property, it was industrial, which even, was even more stuff was allowed.
Oh, really?
You know? I'm not trying to block the system, I've done everything that possibly, but somebody still like, you know, calling them. You know, I think it backfired when they called Kelloland, because it was nothing but positive.
Yeah, like, Jeff, I think what we'll do is we'll keep it to the one topic and that is, as far as the, as far as the Midway Cafe out there, you're following all the ordinances and you're doing everything you need to do. We don't have anything that we've, I don't, I think I'm speaking with the council, you're doing what you can do, I think that's great.
And the trailers, I mean, you guys know there's.
That part of it, I'd say, work with Brian on any of those, I'm probably not gonna dive into specifics or code on this or that. And if you need to check in with the office, I'm finding out, hey, when did someone, someone change and what initiated that? You know, we probably won't be able to deal with all of that tonight here at the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
But, no, I think, I think you're doing a good business out there.
Only thing I wanna add is if somebody makes a complaint to the city, we're obligated to look into it.
Look into it, yeah, I agree with that.
So if somebody's got a beef with the other, it's them, not us.
Yeah, okay, that's where I was trying to get to, because otherwise, you know, I was like, man up and give me a call. If you guys have a problem with it, you know, let me know so I can do something about it. Okay, thank you for your time.
Alright, any other visitors for public comment? Make sure you say your name so Karen gets her from the minutes.
I'm Renee Meyer and I've been planning on running for Governor in 2022, so. And I'm Charles Myers' daughter, I don't know if anybody knows my dad around town, he's been here for quite a while ago. I moved back here three years ago. And so I'm gonna, I'm doing a petition drive, which of course has been delayed because of everything, so that I can get my name on the ballot. But somebody had mentioned the pools, and is that old business or is that something for later?
Great question. That'll be, we are gonna talk about that in our old business under the COVID-19 review.
Okay, that sounds good. I just wanted to introduce myself to you guys, because when I do run for Governor, you know, I wanna help my own community out, so I wanna find out more of what's going on in my community and start kind of taking more of an active role. And maybe too, if you don't mind, like before meetings, maybe I can get signatures for my, for my run for Governor. Just, it's just to get our party on the ballot. I'm with the Constitution Party of South Dakota. So I changed from Republican mainly because there's just too much, I just wanna do it for the community and for the Constitution and that's it, and not too much other. I'm not really a politician. It's just, I'm trying to do it for the good of my state, so, thank you very much.
Even? Alright, anybody else for public comment? Tell you what, this is a good first meeting coming back.
You're always been waiting.
Alright, we're gonna move on to, we've got Chamber talking about Chamber Carnival funds. So Gabby, is that, are you gonna be representing that?
Yeah, I'll represent the company.
Okay. I'll let you, you can take the floor.
Okay, this is Gabby. And I want to discuss the Carnival fund and our Chamber 20 budget.
This call will now be recorded.
As part of our 2020 budget request to the City Council, we had earmarked certain amount of funds for the Carnival. And I'm here tonight to ask you guys to let them use that money elsewhere since Jamboree Day and the Carnival has been canceled. Our concern is that our revenue may be down a little bit this year from businesses closing or businesses having financial hardships due to COVID-19. Also, we would like to do a little bit more for the Chamber businesses and help promote them. We have a larger Discover Hartford campaign and maybe wanna do two Discover Hartford campaigns that really promote the business business town and bring awareness to what we have in town to the community. So my ask tonight is that to allow the Chamber to use those Carnival funds in other ways if we see necessary to support the business community in Hartford.
Alright, thank you Gabby. Can you remind me the dollar amount for those funds?
Yes, it was, we earmarked 15,000 for the Carnival.
Okay. And primarily, if I'm hearing you correctly, you wanna use it for further business promotion, more shop local campaigns, anything like that encouraged spending here in town, correct?
Yeah, the other thing we've discussed is we have kind of a grant program that we've done to help promote businesses as well. We have given some money to downtown Hartford to help with their market that they have going down there. We've given money to the library, and the third thing is escaping me, but we've also done some like community type grant things. So we were thinking to use part of the money for that and part of the money maybe to offset some of the costs for Chamber members if their business really is really struggling. So now that's set home for sure, we do wanna do the Discover Hartford and, you know, do more business promotion in town, but those are some other ideas that we discussed in the last minute for those funds for.
Okay, perfect. And if I, if I'm remembering correctly, Karen or Teresa, those funds haven't been released yet at this point, is that correct?
They have.
Or they have been released?
Didn't we pay them all?
From what I understand from Teresa is once you guys, once you guys say, okay, we're gonna give the Chamber X amount of dollars, the dollars are given to us and they're actually, they're ours to use. But I, I had a conversation with Teresa, she really felt and so did I, that it'd be in our best interest to kind of, kind of get your blessing to use those funds for other purposes. Originally we committed the budget, it was supposed to be for the Carnival.
Okay, so you already, those funds have already been moved over to the Chamber from the city at that, at this point? If that sounds okay.
Yeah, yeah, they've already got paid out and like Gabby said, it, I mean, it's allocated already, it's paid out, it is their funds, but I encourage her to come here just so we're all on the same page, you know, she's not using it for the Carnival. That, let you guys know, and basically, you know, goodwill and communication between us that we know what they're being used for.
Gabby, I have a question for you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, Scott Nelson. Will, in the past with Chamber of Commerce, that decision primarily was directed by the Marketing Committee. Is that still the case now? I mean, how, with the 16K, how do you foresee this being decided upon as far as the campaign as a whole?
I'm not exactly sure what your question is. The Marketing Committee has come up with a proposal to do that Discover Hartford campaign to promote businesses. And that, it was not, we could not spend 15,000 dollars just on that. I think the use of the 15,000 dollars that has been earmarked for the Carnival, we would vote on that as a forward on how to go about using that money. I don't think any one committee would just be given 15,000 dollars and said, hey, go spend it. That's not the purpose. We really, we wanted to use it intentionally and have the board consideration on how we use the funds.
Okay. I'm just gonna say this now.
Is that your question?
Go ahead, I did and I, we gotta, you know, reciprocate by saying that I know personally as a citizen, I would like to see the game plan, the strategy of the Chamber of Commerce for how they're gonna place that 16,000 dollars, since it was not earmarked for advertising. So, I mean, I guess I'm asking you for one more step, and that would be that, you know, once you come up with an approved plan as a Chamber as a whole, then it's presented back to the Chamber or the City Council so that they know exactly where those funds have been allocated in case they are being asked about it, because this is public meetings and there will be people that will know how those funds will be allocated, or why the 16K went directly to you. And they're gonna wanna know. Does that make sense?
So I think that would, I mean, I think we may come up with ideas as the year progresses and as we see how things shake out with COVID-19 and how it affects our businesses. So I would, I don't know that we'd have, or it'd be who wants to put together a full plan right now and how we're gonna use every last penny.
That's fine.
So I would need to, or someone from the Chamber would need to come to future council meetings and every time kind of ask you guys permission to take and use the money for this, take and use the money for that.
And keep in mind Gabby, I'm just one person. The other people that sit at this table may not, may not agree with me. So I'm just, just throwing my two cents worth out there that as a citizen, I would like to know how those 16K would be allocated. So yeah, I mean earmark it for later and it may or may not, you know, be necessary depending on how you guys feel, but, excuse me, you constituents feel, but you know, that is where I'm at.
I'm gonna jump in on what Scott has said as well, and that 15,000's been earmarked for the Carnival and the potential exists that your budget could be cut 15,000 dollars short next year by the council depending upon how 2020 shakes out. Is there anybody on the, on the Chamber who has considered squirreling that money away?
Certainly we have. We for sure would really love to use 3,500 of it for a Discover Hartford like campaign that I just kind of mentioned earlier to really promote businesses and get the community and businesses kind of involved and aware of each other, because we feel like business in town is hurting. We've already had three Chamber members go under due to COVID-19 and we hate to see anymore, so we're just trying to think outside of the box and really promote the businesses that we have here so we can keep them here and not lose any more.
Alright, do you have any questions?
Mayor, can I jump in? We have a Chamber and Economic Development Director that works for us, who will be at those meetings who we can charge with keeping track of what's going on. I agree with Travis, but Gabby's making a great point. I guess I would say, I'll make a motion that we release the 15,000 of the Chamber from the, from the Carnival.
And then released, so.
But she's looking for a motion, right, basically, or no? She just wants approval from us?
I think she wants a consensus from you guys, yeah, if they can.
Well, I'd say then I would give approval, if that's the, what you need.
Is your, are you making a motion?
I am.
You wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the use of the 15,000 for the Chamber with reporting back by the Chamber and Economic Development Director to the council.
Your motion.
Second.
Second by Brenneman? Any discussion? What's wrong, what's wrong with my, what? Oh, sorry.
I just wanna ask one question on this, because Gabby had called me for the Carnival for the previous year. And I'm usually the one that helps the Chamber, I went to, you know, to help them get Carnival. I just wanted to know if they paid a deposit on this year's, the one that got canceled.
No, no deposit was paid.
Because, I just wanted to make sure that they didn't give them a deposit, because it might be a different Carnival that you're gonna get next year. You understand?
Right, no, no deposit was paid.
Okay, just one, that's the only question I've, just brought into it then.
No, that's my question, thank you.
The only discussion I have is this continuation of my original thought. I'm all for, I'm doubling down on advertising for our businesses, but they have a budget for that. And in my opinion, it's too early to earmark an additional 15,000 dollars for more advertising that is high in the sky at this point, minus the 3,500 that she's over.
I agree Travis. I think in the spirit of this, what I'll get out of this is that they may need to use it.
Yeah.
Or they may need to use part of it.
Right.
And they may not need to use all of it. And I think that, in my opinion, I don't, I don't feel like we need to micromanage how that's used. I think that it's in their hands at this point to do something responsibly with it. Any other discussion? Okay, I vote, Nelson?
No.
Glanzer?
Abstained.
Keel?
No.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yeah.
Alright. We have three yes votes, but only two no votes.
Basically they abstain.
They abstain and no, okay.
Yeah.
I don't vote yes, I break the tie.
I think you break ties in the case of the no. I think it's allocating.
It's already, yeah.
I mean, allocating.
We're not spending their money.
Just clarifying.
But you're right though, yeah, ties for appropriations.
Hold on. Next, we've got Callie up with the downtown market.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. So yes, so tonight I have on the downtown Hartford Inc. hat and I wanted to give you guys a little bit of an update of kind of the plans for the market and I have a few questions and maybe some requests from you. So our first market is in two weeks. We are moving forward with our June market. And the June market is gonna be a little bit reduced from what the rest of the season's planned for. We're not gonna be doing entertainment, we're not gonna be doing kids activities. We're wanting to kind of work our way into it and kind of see how things go and then adjust, make plans, reevaluate as, as the season continues. So very excited though, we've got a lot of really great plans for the season. And so my first question is, will we do food again? So food truck's gonna be coming and then we're gonna have also the opportunity for different organizations to, to fundraise food. Where I would like the food truck placed this year, last year it was sort of right there in the intersection of First and Main on the west side. So now, this, this year I would like to put it more on Main Street, but kind of in front of the empty lot there that you guys took ownership over, kind of right where that Rennell building is. That's kind of the, the plan. And then right in front of Joshua's Coffee, where, not this month, but the next month, we're gonna have sort of a stage for music, entertainment, that kind of a thing. And so my first question is, is there electricity in that area in case the food truck doesn't have a generator or some way to get electricity to them? Does that building have electricity or?
It's disconnected.
Okay, so it doesn't, okay. So it, most of them have their own generators, so it's not really a concern, but I know I had one truck that ended up running electrical cord from the brewery last time. So is there any options in that area there?
The only thing we have is that one pole and that's sort of exclusive for Jamboree.
Okay.
She Valley just does it for that, so.
Okay.
It's set, or was that's disconnected until that weekend and they turn it back on.
Alright, so I'll just always check and make sure that they're all good to go and if not, then would there be any concerns with running electrical from the brewery to that area? It'd probably take a, it would be a little like the ways that.
Looking at electrician.
Are you owing, are you owing nonprofit funds?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, and we're accepting applications for that.
We also have the electrical inspector in the room, so.
Is there traffic going across there?
So Main Street is closed down. There wouldn't be traffic there, on that, that part of it.
There is a hookup in the back of the elevator owns the building now, 50 amp on the, on the building.
The city actually owns that building and the power and the gas have been disconnected.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Alright, well, that at least helps me. I'll just, I'll make sure the line, I'll make sure that they're all good to go then before they come out. So then, so in, in thinking of how we're going to make this more socially distanced, more socially. So then, um, so in, in thinking of how we're going to make this more socially distanced, more socially responsible, uh, we're, we're wanting to, you know, the vendors are, it's already an open air space and so that's already less of a concern, but, um, last time we had our picnic tables set out, so, um, I was wanting to request use of the empty lot that is across the street from the brewery, right abutted to the elevator. Basically as an opportunity to put, maybe place some picnic tables on that space. I don't know exactly how big that space is, maybe part of it could be used for parking as well. I know that was a concern last year. People didn't know where to park. Um, of course there's parking on First Street and then from Modish, this direction, that's all parking space available, but there was always concern about parking when there's a big, big event downtown. So is, is that a possibility that we could utilize that lot for maybe some seating for tables? Maybe people could park on a different part of it?
Craig or Mark, any issues?
No, we're actually, I think.
With, uh, with the reasonable lots for the downtown market?
Correct. Yep.
Well, I'd be happy if we had some kind of policy because right now it just seems like the elevator uses them without asking and now we got one that is asking and I still don't know what policy is.
Well, if you remember right, we, we moved that from the last meeting to, to a future meeting, so. It's, it's coming in time. Um, this is an ask, so.
Would it make sense for Callie to submit, uh, her plan in the event of a special event permit with how that, you see that being utilized?
The lot specifically?
Yes, for those events, yes.
Would we have time this time?
Would we have time?
Not a time. This first one's running again.
In two weeks on Thursday, June fourth.
How is this any different than using the heart for Jamboree days? They ask to use it, we say yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Again, my thoughts for it is specifically, before I had all of the tables sort of on main there, kind of double sided. If maybe we could just be able to spread those out a little more and then utilize the lot a little more just so that every, that one, that way we're not promoting like crowding in anyone's space, but then we're able to just kind of spread people out further.
Do we have enough jersey barriers to kinda protect the area from traffic?
We should be okay. Of course, we still have the type threes, we've got two, some things. Um, we are planning on taking that building out either this week or next week so I'll be out of there.
Okay.
Um, and then I'll talk with the elevator, make sure they don't have the equipment parked in there and then make sure that they're okay with us using their driveway approach to get into that lot for parking if we need it.
And then, um, I was wondering how many picnic tables are available that the city owns?
Twelve total.
There's twelve, okay. So, um, a former someone who used to work in the city, Economic Development Director, recommended that I ask for use of those tables and that you waive the fee. The suggestion was also perforce that the tables aren't in very good condition. Maybe the city might want to consider replacing that at some future point.
What's your meeting in August?
But yeah, in all, in all, in all sincerity though, I would like to request for the use of the tables without paying the twenty-five dollar fee per table.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five deposit five dollars.
Twenty-five deposit.
Yes, exactly.
That is just for June fourth?
It is for the entire season, so five markets.
And it's twelve tables.
Twelve tables.
Motion to approve, uh, downtown market for twelve picnic tables, waive the fee. Okay, we got a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna sign it. Any discussion on that? That is not including the city lot at this point.
What's the motion Jeremy, just for picnic tables?
That's correct, yep. All right, no discussion? We'll vote, Keel?
Yes.
Klanser?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
Vernon?
Yeah.
And Mahan?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the city lot.
Make a motion to allow them to use the city lots on Main Street.
It was a year, it's at first.
Yeah. All year long.
All year long, second.
All right.
For the duration of downtown market?
They could obviously change if they sold or construction.
Very good.
Yeah.
So still second.
Would you, would you still like need to submit a proposal of sort of how we use it then or?
Not with this motion.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
But it, uh, if somebody asks, I don't think it hurts for.
Sure.
Somebody's got, outside of this. Any other discussion?
What's the motion?
Motion is to allow, um, allow them to use the city lot for the downtown market. And Mark discussed a little bit about unless there's construction, sale, or something else that we need to do with that.
By no application, or special permit application?
Correct, no exception.
They were asking for their event.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, you have?
Just out of curiosity, just out of curiosity before we vote. Are we gonna, are we gonna tell the elevator that they can't use it on those days or are we just gonna assume that the elevators continue to use it on those days? Or who's gonna believe that?
My first thought, Mark, is it would be no, no different than blocking off Main Street for the event. They would have to be removed cars and. Right Craig?
I'll, I'll stop and talk to them.
Yeah, cause we still have access from the, uh, west side or wood, which may.
Coming off the east side, yeah.
So we don't have to have their entry.
We don't want to have to.
So I think if we run barricades along the lot line with them, we can enter from the east and tell them to get their stuff out of there, you know, on Friday night by certain time. Cause there's a meeting on Wednesday, Thursdays are in, yeah, so Thursday night at this time you have to have your stuff on.
Yeah, just so you heard, Craig said he would talk to the elevator about coordinating with us for this event, these events.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? We'll vote, Vernon?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Klanser?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Mahan?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your support for all of that. Um, I don't have anything else specifically to discuss tonight. Did you have any other questions to help the market in general?
So the first Thursday every month?
It's, yes.
Okay.
So.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, we should, we should love to thank you for doing all that.
Thank you very much.
Yep. All right, next item I find out. Sam Assam or somebody speaking on his behalf to discuss the top street lift in Turtle Creek Highlands. Anybody here present? Okay, not many more. Next up, Mr. Hanson, um, to discuss the dog and cat licensing requirements.
Yep. I think we got it either back or put it up. My name is Robert Hanson. Physical address is six oh one North St. Lawrence Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. The issue that I bring is one of rabies vaccination for pets. We are dog owners and my wife is a primary dog person, but on the second page is a receipt from the Dakota Large Animal Clinic. And the reason we use that clinic is that, uh, that was established by, um, Dr. Tornberg and I have over a twenty-five year history with the Tornberg family. I spent ten years living in Hearsford, South Dakota. Officially the funerals of their family. And that's primarily why we have stayed connected with them. But if you see under description of services that day, the bottom line says rabies vaccination came. When I submitted that for our dog license, I was told that that's not sufficient because a certificate is required. So I called and talked to them and they said that this street documentation is accepted in Sioux Falls, Harrisburg, Canton, other small communities. And I would think that the main concern for Hartford would be that if you're gonna have a, an animal or pet, cat or a dog, that would have an annual rabies vaccination. So I had two requests. One, it was because I was out there, my wife took the dog down. Uh, but because of the COVA ID, uh, you had to call in, they came out and got the dog. Took the dog in, did everything and then came out with the receipt and gave the credit card and they swiped it. So there was no in-office contact. One request would be that that's sufficient documentation to show that our dog was vaccinated for rabies in twenty twenty. And then if you look at your ordinance, it says in the second paragraph, before any license shall be issued under this section, the applicant shall furnish a certificate of vaccination. And I would encourage you to consider changing that to read, the applicant shall furnish a certification of vaccination. Cause then we're just talking about what piece of paper you're looking at. As long as there is certification that the animal was vaccinated, I would think that would be sufficient. Any questions?
Define the definition between certification and certificate?
Certification would be proof
Yeah.
that vaccination took place. Certificate says that proof has to be written on a certificate piece of paper.
Got it.
That's my understanding. Because we have our application in payments in, but it can't be processed because we didn't provide a certificate. To me, we provided certification and proof, but it's not in a certificate form.
Thank you. Anything Teresa, Karen, anything that you're seeing from your side? Is it, is it a matter of different veterinarians issuing different things or is a certificate?
Everyone's always been able to produce a certificate of vaccination. When you get a rabies, you know, vaccine, there's a certificate of vaccination that you can get from the vet. A lot of them just vaccinize into us, you know, um, the clinic does, they can fax them over, email that they've been doing to us too. Um, the thing with like, um, a bill saying that you got it vaccinated, I mean, it shows that that day you wouldn't vaccinate or you, or you paid for it or whatnot, but it doesn't have on it like the certificate does as far as what kind of vaccine and how long that vaccine. There's one year, two year, and three year rabies vaccinations and it gives the actual date of when that rabies expires. So if there is an issue with an animal, dog bite or whatever, um, first thing when the Humane Society comes to us and say, you know, is this pet licensed and when is the rabies? We wanna see the current rabies certificates to know how long that vaccination is good for, so. I think that, and, and this is all in ordinance before, you know, I restarted with the city, but I, I think that's the purpose of the certificate is having that data was actually administered and then when it expired, just if there is an incident, so. So I think that's how it came about, but.
Is Zoe the dog, is that what that I'm reading here?
Yes.
It doesn't specify on here if it's a one, two, or three, so right, I can't see that.
But it does specify that the dog was vaccinated in twenty twenty. And dog licenses are issued every year.
Right.
They're only one year at a time.
So how do we do that Teresa? Do we keep the certificate on file and they come and get their license every year?
Yeah, we keep copy.
If they dump a three year shop?
Yep, we keep copies.
Any questions? I don't have any other questions.
Um, Deb got hit by a dog and ended up having to take pills and do all kinds of stuff, so it's not the most fun deal I will take. And I don't think the dog that they have license, but it was expired. Yeah, so. Definitely do some research between now and our next meeting. Get some more information and put some of that we feel needs to put on the agenda, change the ordinance by all means.
You know, I would encourage you to do that. The one question I'm asking is that proper certification for twenty twenty? So that they can issue us a license.
Is your, is this that, um, Harrisburg, they just, they don't, they don't produce certificates or?
They said they, they said this is the documentation that is accepted in Sioux Falls, Harrisburg.
So if I hear, if I hear Teresa right, at a minimum, this is a one year rabies vaccine.
At a, yeah, yeah.
Yep. So in this application, I would be open to, you know, obviously putting this on file and saying, but when they renew their license next year, they.
I did call the veterinarian's office and they do, will produce a certificate if you ask for one, is what she told me.
For Dakota Large Animal?
All right, well, I like your approach Travis. I think, um, further research on that and, I mean, right now it says that's what if they produce one, I don't know why we wouldn't just get that from them.
But I'm guessing the owner has to request one.
I would imagine.
We had to just call the owner and ask? Hipper for dogs.
My concern though is, the primary concern is certification that an animal wasn't vaccinated. And to me that is certification because it's a one year license and that dog wasn't vaccinated in twenty twenty. And I don't see why they can't do that.
Karen's already beat me to it. The first thing I was gonna do tomorrow was call Dakota Large Animal and say, hey, I need my rabies vaccination certificate. And see what their response was. And it sounds like if you did that, they would say, yes, we have one. And would you like us to mail it to you or fax it to the city of Hartford?
I also thought about just taking the, the receipt down and just have it right across the top, invoice and certificate of rabies vaccination. Because then you're asking for a certificate in specified way and the city needs to provide a certificate to take to the vet. But I don't, I don't want to delay your point of view.
Yep.
I could wind up on that, on your day, man.
All I can think of is we have passed it out here. Is, do I have a marriage certificate or do I have a marriage certification?
Right. You don't need a certificate to marry in church for going to a single person. Thank you for your time. Thanks Bob.
All right, we're gonna move down to hearing these applications, agreements. So Sam, you have public hearing for malt beverage licensing laws. Questions, any motions?
Any violations in the last hearing?
There was just a one violation from the goat in twenty nineteen. It was serving the underage.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can we do it all once?
I believe you can.
Yeah.
Yep.
Motion to approve licenses as presented.
Second.
And a motion for all of you approved in the second? Discussion? All right, you're on. We'll vote, Klanser?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Vernon?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Mahan?
Yeah.
All right, next up we got review and approve a chamber and city, city Hartford agreement. These were three year agreements that will be put in place with, with the chamber, the one right after that is Flautary Children's Foundation. Um, it's kind of timely that these come up at the same time with, with Dave coming on board. It's kind of timely that these come up at the same time with, with Gabe coming on board, Noah, that. I had no way of foreseeing that, but that's just how the timetable works out. But there were three-year agreements at the time, you know, we're looking for a chance to review them. There needs to be the changes to them. Now's the time to talk about them. Otherwise, if there aren't, now's the chance to approve that we signed those for another three years.
And, and they both have been sent to the chamber and the H A D F, so they're, you know, boards have looked at them and approved them. The only change, meaning is, in the job description, we had updated it when we, you know, had Gabe on, so we have an updated job description with it. The agreement with the foundation, they had talked about putting in wording as far as the Envision 2025 campaign. I talked to Justin after that, and really, that's in the job description as far as that director, so it's covered under that exhibit, so we didn't, we can't put anything in the agreement specifically. It's shown in the exhibit, so he was okay with that. So, otherwise, you know, there are changes. And this basically revolved out of the director and, you know, kind of his agreement between both parties of how, what the director will do and how interact between the organizations. So just kind of goes over the scope of his work.
The only thing that jumped out at the H A D F meeting on Friday is, is the, as Teresa mentioned, Envision 2025. In this description, when it was put together, it was still called Envision 2024. And I don't know if it's worth amending.
I don't know if we really have to. I think, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's all relevant, and we know that its role to become Envision 2025 is really the only thing that.
And it's really just to the time extension that you've put onto the plan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't these both at once, or separate? Mayor?
If I wanted to...
Probably separate, since they're two different agenda items and organizations.
I'd make a motion to approve the agreement between the city of Hartford and the Hartford Area Chamber of Commerce for three more years.
Second. Motion and second?
Isn't it the Hartford Area Development Corporation?
I did chamber first.
Who's doing chamber?
You're in chamber first. Yeah.
Are there any other discussions?
Only because that was the first one I had on the screen.
I'm scrolling here like crazy today. There it is, I'm sorry.
Malt, Nelson?
Yes.
Blazer?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Martin?
Yeah.
Any other motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the three-year agreement between the Hartford Area Development Foundation and the city of Hartford.
Second. Discussion. Karen, the vote? Jones?
Yes.
Brennman?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Blazer?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And Martin?
Yeah.
Move through. Brian couldn't be here for the fire department's report tonight, so we're going to move down to the first report. David Steinmeier with the Chamber of Commerce. Welcome.
Uh-oh. Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Gabriel Steinmeier. It's nice to see you all in person instead of over a Zoom cam, for thinking of having me. I'm excited to be the new director here with the Chamber of Commerce with Echo Development Department with the Area Development Foundation. So very excited to be part of this great team here in the city and push forward on some great projects and just continue the momentum that y'all have really developed here in the community. It's, it's exciting to come in and see what's been happening, what's on deck, and what's, what's coming up after that and that we're going to push forward for. So thank you for the opportunity to come and join this great team. I have only been here for a week, so there's not a lot for me to report on, really. But in that week, really tried to get down to meeting with as many people on the different groups as possible. Had a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce my first eight years, so that was exciting. We had a nice, long conversation about a number of different topics. Then had a good meeting with the foundation board on Friday. And other than that, I've been trying to just network with the different players in the area, state representatives, different resources around, and they continue to meet the different city officials and business owners here that are members of the foundation Chamber of Commerce, and just continue to work on various projects. So are there any questions about my report, or about, anything about me in general?
Good to go.
How are you finding Hartford so far?
Uh, nice. I enjoy it. Yeah. It's a nice, nice little quiet community that everyone seems to really enjoy being here.
Yep.
Is there anything that we can help you with through, you know, with this autumn morning over the next, you know, over these sixty, ninety days?
Yeah, no, Teresa's done a great job with the, just trying to check up on me day as the days go on. The team here at the city's been really, really helpful, just trying to direct me to various things in the community that I'm looking forward. And, yeah, I, I enjoy just getting out there and kind of exploring. So it's been a, it's been a whirlwind of about a week and a half, but it's been enjoyable. I look forward to the rest of it.
She's used to checking up because she had to do it on Jesse all the time.
I'm glad you do those audio people. You can't judge, okay, thank you. Hallelujah.
He's going to ring that bell.
Let me yell it off as you can.
I live in Brookings, I live in Englewood, but I never lived anywhere close to audio. Yeah, that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good to have you.
Welcome. You want to mention your team here, partner?
Good evening, everyone. I don't have any action items in my, generally anything specific that I wanted to touch on in the board, unless that's just the questions, harder to be asked about Nicholson Rowan, you know, that's just that application I'm looking to file on.
I should have looked down, I'm going to see it. Sorry.
The only other thing I wanted to point out is on the wastewater treatment facility and talking to Teresa, we want to start moving forward with some preliminary design work on that project. And so we're starting to scope some of that out, and we're talking about possibly coming to the next meeting with just some preliminary design conversations and things to look at there. So, other than that, we've got the Rude and O'Callaghan intersection that's going to bid next week, and so we're looking forward to opening those bids.
Any other bids going out for other, other communities, seeing what's happening out there?
The last bid we did was a few weeks ago now. But this is a small project, so I think there'll be some interest in it.
And we're not ready to bid the sanitary.
Uh, no, the san-, the plans are done. We're waiting on one easement. So we did plan to get comments back on easements just last week. So city attorney in our offices will be doing those. There is some discussion with new funding that's coming along. I was pushing that, that project out as well, which Teresa can probably elaborate on.
Um, what's stock, and you can either answer this or let us know at some point, but what stock wells background with wastewater treatment facilities do you got?
In-house?
Yeah.
So, you know, we're, we've been building the team over the last five, seven years or so.
Yeah.
Um, we have an experienced gentleman that's been with us for about a year, year and a half or so. We are designing Harrisburg's wastewater facility right now. We're working with Lennox, they've just engaged us with helping operate their, their facility out there.
Okay.
Um, we actually just hired this week another wastewater person that has, that's a senior engineer, has played the experience for water and wastewater. Somebody would bring his experience to this project.
That's good to know.
Yep.
Because this, yeah, this is a big project for us.
Yes.
I would encourage you and Gabe to visit at some point. I know Gabe has mentioned some experience, some, some stuff he's worked on, or...
Yeah, contacts for it.
Yeah. And Gabe and I met earlier, or last week.
Yeah, this, earlier this week.
Yep. And, uh, last week. And, uh, we talked about it, we did all the same, so.
Good.
Some different thoughts there.
Since the, since, uh, Jones, you know, talked about Nicholson, Penmark, let's say the guys come up there reseeded.
Yeah.
And drilled some seed in up there, kind of loaded some stuff up, looks good. Will they come back and then re-spot or verify pin, property pin locations?
Yes, if there's something missing there, we will come back and set those.
Okay.
Do you know if, if you're missing anything?
Uh, the northwest corner of my property, uh, we'd love that one to be confirmed again, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, there's a vault.
Well, there's a gray west vault. We looked through our survey, and anything that we shot, you know, before the project, we can reset those. Sometimes we don't know if, if there's been something that pulled out or not, without the property owners to go back to us.
Right, yeah. With that vault being there, I wasn't sure if it maybe got shifted and that could have been pulled.
Very well, yeah.
Forty that lens. Hopefully not getting the vault. Right. Like that transformer down here in Maine? All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Well, I kind of do. I actually went to school of mines for...
Come on up, come on up.
I actually went to school of mines for engineering, and so I, and I toured wastewater treatment plants. I was just kind of curious what kind of plant it was going to be, and what, what some of the specifics are. What, is it a digester plant, or what is it?
Uh, so we've been, we're still evaluating that, the different treatment options, and that's actually part of why we want to get started with preliminary design, so we can answer some of those questions and go a little bit more about those types of processes.
And then how does it grow with the community as it, as it goes? Because different flows make a lot, lot of differences.
Yeah, so we'll be designing this for, you know, like twenty-plus design life. Depending on the treatment process that we choose, you know, we'll, we'll be looking at those life cycles, I guess. You know, I'm not per se the wastewater expert in our office, but I know that we investigate, we'll find us an aerolane system, oxidation fish type system, there's Sager systems out there, those types of different treatments.
Okay, I was just kind of curious. Just, thank you.
Good questions. Thank you. Thank you. With that, I'm going over to public works.
I have nothing to add to my report or change, I guess. Anybody have any questions on my report? Anything else that's going on?
Sounds like we've got a couple of trucks plod, huh?
Yep. Yeah, we, uh, was actually out in, out in the hills on vacation. But, yeah, we're doing well. I think we got a good deal on. I've talked to the Kelly maintenance guy out there a couple different times on, and just trying to figure out something cool getting picked up, so.
Where are they at?
Uh, Crookston, Minnesota.
Oh, sure. Yep.
I've kind of hinted to them about maybe dragging them down toward Bill, Minnesota, and then we beat them halfway and take them, so. Thinking about it, so.
Yeah. Downtown lights?
Um, actually, I've been getting, I met with Ricky Kudzweiler and Jessica Evans, Zoom meeting last Friday or whatever it was. I just got some emails back that were like Jessica phoned, but so far there is no, they've been trying to find and fix them, there is nothing that, no way to fix them. So now they're trying to, we're actually going to talk about a little bit more about whether to leave them where they're at, and possibly come to you guys about maybe unhooking the street lights, or just leave them like the hour and use them for cosmetic, you know, for daytime, basically. So, that's something that they're kicking around. Like I said, I just seen some emails today, I haven't had a chance to read them, so.
Okay, so when is the one-year up on those? When did, when did we install those?
It had been last fall. So, so there's, we're still kind of meeting back and forth and that stuff on, and I know this, and we kind of figured those two, they have, they have issues, but, so we're looking at either moving those two somewhere else, or doing something different.
So where's the future? I know we got a stop sign down at the end of Maine. Have you seen any difference, Brittany, or no?
The Steadman sign?
Yeah.
Yeah. It has, has gone down. You still have your few individuals that are...
Yeah.
Going through the best of it. But yes, we have seen it go down both ways, so.
Yeah.
And I know the no truck sign, that helped too, because that was happening.
Yeah, we, um, there was concerned citizen up there with trucks coming down that road. They were coming down Nicholson and turned down South Main there, and going to the elevator. So, um, that day we put the signs up down there, and then I talked to the deputy, and then, um, Nelson went over to the elevator and gave him a map of the truck routes in town, and told him that the deputy is going to be watching, so.
Good.
So hopefully we can stop the trucks on those sides of it.
Good.
The only other thing I have in my report is the concrete, um, for the, you got, actually we get three quotes for doing the concrete out there at Sports Complex. We're looking at doing, uh, six-inch slabs, basically, or pads for, uh, three handicap spots, basically set up for almost like a van-type handicap, with enough room between them. Putting a, like a five-foot sidewalk up in front of them, so they can get out, get to that, and then go down into the back. Like I said, we got three different prices, two of them within like thirty dollars. There, depends on if you do more six-inch concrete or more four-inch concrete. Their numbers are that close, depending on, you know, between we, higher level. Um, the thing is, if price came back higher than what we had, had set aside, I think we had fifteen, and it came in at over seventeen. So we need about, I figured maybe seventeen, or maybe another twenty-five hundred to three thousand, make sure we're covered, to do what needs to be done out there, so.
Sure. And being it's under the bid limit, we don't have to...
Yeah, we don't need to...
Do those kind of things.
Quotes are good.
Quotes are good.
Yep.
So you're looking for a motion to, to increase that amount by...
Two thousand, for instance.
Make a motion to approve an additional three thousand, up to a good three thousand dollars for ADA Sports sidewalk project. Second.
General on that, Teresa? All right, discussion on that. All right, Karen? Jones?
Yes.
Brennman?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Blazer?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
So that's all I got, at least. And I'll check with them both and see which ones can really get there, which are worked on in a timely fashion, and we'll...
Thank you, Perry.
Thanks.
Any other questions, your friend? That'll be good. Thank you. Move to Karen's report.
I didn't have anything to add to my report unless someone has questions for me. The only action item I have is the auditors finished last month the annual report. I have looked it over, and it appears to be accurate. So I just made a motion to approve that, and I'll publish it and get it filed away.
Sales tax numbers look, oh, yeah, good. Considering everything going on there, is there any differences that would lead to that, other than regular sales tax receipts?
The only thing I noticed is that, like, last year at the end of April, and this year at the end of April, last year we had eight payments in the, or, we had seven payments in the system. This year we have eight payments. So, and, and the last one we got was right on the third, yes. So it might have been recording time, so I'll be interested to see what next month, because that's been through that, you know, the first part of this COVID hard hit, you know, when businesses were shut down to see. But knock on wood, hopefully it doesn't hurt too bad.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Hopefully it stays up there, so.
I maybe asked this before, but, and, and I apologize if I have, but, look, sales tax dollars, we get them from the state. We have no, do we have any way of knowing where the, if any of those sales tax dollars are coming from online sales? They don't break that out for us. I mean, we know they're collecting it, we just don't know.
The only breakdown we can get on their site is they'll, uh, break it down by industry, like the food service industry, um, hotel industry, manufacturing, you know, by industry, but we don't know who, you know, paid what, and, and they don't break online sales down at all.
Sure.
So it's kind of...
I don't have an Amazon online, I don't know.
No, they don't, they're right. So unfortunately, it'd be nice if they did have that, but... Yeah.
Test and seed companies, that an annual purchase for fertilizer to the parks? Can we see, expect that on yearly?
It's actually, we'll do it in another application this fall.
So it's about double that, then? That's just our raw materials, not necessarily our expense, our labor.
Just materials, yeah. And that's for every park.
Yes, well, right. Sorts them.
Trying to treat the other part.
Okay.
All right. All right. Any questions, here?
We need a motion for the audit. We need a motion for the audit.
We do.
I'd make a motion to accept the results of the two thousand eighteen city audit.
It, it's actually the annual report.
Annual report, thank you, Teresa. I'll say annual report then.
Discussion? Keel?
Yes.
Glender?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Arden?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I only correct you because they're doing the audit right now.
Sorry, I think you already said audit. Oh, you were talking about, okay, nevermind. Nevermind.
Auditors did the annual report. Audit eighty-six.
I heard audit, I said audit.
Um, just a couple of things I wanna touch on my report, just so you don't miss them. Um, got an update on the grants we've submitted, so for, um, hazard mitigation grants, those are FEMA grants, we submitted two for generators, backup generators, one for the main lift station, one at the Assam development down there. And then, of course, the, the storm shelter slash concession restroom up at the Sports Complex. The state has approved the building up at the Sports Complex and the one generator out there on Assam, so. State's approved it, it goes on to FEMA, we'll have to wait for their approval, that'll probably be sometime later this year. The other generator that did get approved on the main lift station, they're gonna hold on to that and with the next round of funding, resubmit that, so we still have a chance for that too. They just, they had, um, like, most times more applications than funds available, so, but they'll resubmit it. And then Mitch kinda alluded to that, but the sewer up along Western, um, just last week, we found out of a possible grant opportunity for that. Right now, you know, we're planning the project this year and we're partially gonna pay with it with lip funds from the governor's office and then the rest of it, we have an SRF loan on it, so we have the project, the funds to do it. But like I said, last week we just found out, um, there, because of the CARES Act, there's more money out there for infrastructure projects, which this were qualified, so there's a grant opportunity, um, an economic development grant opportunity to the money that we have under loans right now could get paid fully with a grant. We, it looks like we have a pretty, talked with the guy with the state with that, it looks like we have a pretty good chance for that, so. The caveat though, of course you gotta go through that grant process, it'll probably take this year to do it, they'll decide that either at the end of the year or the beginning of the next, so. Instead of this year being a project, it would be a next year project, which, you know, we're not gonna be able to do the storm shelter or anything up there till next year. I don't think it'll interfere with any projects going on, you know, delaying the sewer. So I really think, you know, um, I've already started, you know, I can see Cog and talk to Mitch about getting, you know, updated applications, like, I definitely think it's unless there's any reservations from you guys, but I think we should try to get the free money versus a loan money on this project. Um, like I said, I don't think it'll pushing back a year is going to hurt anything that we have going on up there, so, we all.
Since you mentioned that, I know my contractor had mentioned in a meeting, um, uh, regarding Ninth Street about shovel-ready projects and possible grant monies. So I don't know if there's more potentially available, you could apply to our shovel-ready projects, Ninth Street and Opal and Crestman perhaps, or no, it's not Crestman.
Root.
Root.
Root?
Yeah, so. Be worth looking into.
Checking into, yeah, yeah, there's more money out there and like I said, you can get a grant versus a loan, definitely worth it. Um, I did check into though, like I said, our loan's been approved, I checked in to see if there's, we haven't drawn anything from it, we haven't imposed on it. Um, talked to them, um, down at the state and they will just sit on that until we hear on this grant, so if if we don't get the grant, we move ahead with the loan, but if we do get it, there's no follow or any issues with not doing that loan, so. So we'll keep moving forward on that. Um, just also a couple of things that have come up last week, I sat in, you know, it was last Friday on a conference call about, um, transportation projects in the area and just, so you guys are aware of, um, I ninety, there's gonna be some upcoming work between Humboldt and Hartford here. They're gonna redo the lanes and it looks like, uh, the West Lane's gonna get redone in twenty twenty-two and then East Lane in twenty twenty-four. And then, of course, the bridge reconstruction in twenty twenty-five, that is still planned on the state's transportation list, so. Didn't know if you guys knew those lanes, I didn't until we went through this, so there'll be a lot of construction coming up.
All the nails are picked up.
Yeah, so, um. Um, I have been, the guys have been out with the sweeper and I have been updating that sweeping log in your box, so you know, if you're interested in that, it, it's, it's out there. Jess has done a lot of the sweeping and Alan, our, our new guy, has been working on that too, so designing all that. And one thing that I didn't get on the agenda, didn't think about it, and Karen thought about it, but our next meeting is June second. That's when they're having elections here, so we have to look at moving that. Consensus from you guys, if you wanna have it Monday the first or Wednesday the third, what would work out best for you and we'll get that over.
Either one tonight with me, Monday or Wednesday?
Brittany, what works for you?
Well, let me check.
Yeah, June one or third.
June one looks good.
Either. Either one's good for me too.
What's Monday the first, any emotion?
Don't have any emotions on the agenda, we'll just, I'll plan for that and that's what I'll post and the.
June one, Mark, are you good with that? If we move the council meeting because June two is election day?
To move the council date to what day, Travis?
June first.
June first, uh, Monday?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't care, just make it whatever, so. I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. So we'll plan on June first then and that's what I'll advertise on the agenda, so. Okay, and that's all we've got, unless you have questions for me?
Oh, that's, really good news.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move over to old business. Couple of these got moved, um, yeah. First one here is the new liquor regulations on city right of way. That came up as a topic with, with helping back up some margin extra, so.
So, basically, you know, in your packet, I put information, you know. We talked about this a little bit at our last meeting, but you know, if you wanted to be able to consume or sell liquor on, you know, public right of way, there's a couple of ways you can do it. Um, first of all, the liquor license is tied to that piece of property, so if they go out on the sidewalk or in city street, that's city property and so, you know, they can't do it under their liquor license unless they, like I said, do a couple of things. They can either apply for a special events permit and, um, cities can allow that, um, it used to be three days, now you can have it fifteen consecutive days if you want. But that's in a row, you can do, you know, one special events permit this week, another one next week and, you know, da-da-da-da. Um, or the other way is if you wanna allow, you know, consumption on the city sidewalks or, you know, right of way is that you would have to change your city ordinance to allow that. Now, depending on what we really wanna do, if we wanna change our ordinance for all time or if we just wanna do something during this, you know, this summer, during this COVID and temporarily we change it, the fastest way to enact something like that is to, you know, uh, basically do a special events permit, have whoever wants to be able to sell or drink on city sidewalks to submit a special events permit and have you guys approve it. That would be the fastest way to get something put in place. Um, ordinance, obviously, you know, it's an ordinance, so you gotta have two readings, you gotta publish it and then you got the twenty day referendum period before it's, you know, legal to do that, so you're looking at a couple of months process there, so it depends on, you know, if the city wants to allow it and, and how you wanna allow that.
No, I think that's good, that's a good update there, um.
Chris had reached out to me and I talked to Teresa about this today and we discussed this very topic, I said, you know, ordinance is gonna take, summer's gonna be gone before we get that done. And I don't know that we really wanna do that, this is kind of a, we're in a unique situation. I suggested, Teresa and I talked today, I think that's what he should do, is apply for a special permit. We can have a discussion then when we got the permit in front of us, but I think that's the best thing to do. And if anybody else wants to do it, if South Bar or anybody else would wanna have the same deal, they apply, they could, they could enter a, uh, special event permit, we we'd review that.
Is there an ordinance issue?
No, right. And that's just it, I think that this thing is so, it's so fluid and we'll talk about it more in the COVID nineteen piece of it, that, uh, you know, I'm just seeing things coming out of soup balls just from today where it sounds like by the end of this month, there's a chance they'll have all of the restrictions pulled, um, so at that point, you know, special event permit or not, you, you can have full occupancy, you can do whatever you wanna do. I'm not saying that whatever they do is what we do, but, um, it, it's really changing week by week, so I think that, that's the best option and if a business wants to do it, so.
And Chris and Galley are looking at this from the social distancing aspect, I mean, they're really, they know it's gonna give them some more space and they want space off the tables or whatever. I mean, they're looking at it from a conscientious standpoint, I think, I think it's a good move for them.
Okay, well, we don't need any action on that, any more discussion on that?
And like Arden said, I did, I've talked to Chris and, and they're moving ahead with a special event application, so, okay.
Just a clarification, that special events have to be approved by the city?
Yes. And anything without
I'm sorry, the city council has to prove.
Yeah, yeah, anything with alcohol has to be advertised as a public hearing and it has to come with the governing board, so.
Timeline works, we don't have to have a special meeting or anything? Good.
Alright, next I have a review, proposed changes to employee manuals. We started to go with this last meeting, I don't know if there's any changes since then, but.
I haven't done any changes. Like I said, this is, you know, basically just to clarify employee manual a little bit, I mean, you know, it was originally drafted, everybody was hourly, so it was kinda geared towards hourly employees. The, most of it is just, um, putting that extra word or two to say, you know, that basically specifying which, you know, maybe late is overtime is just for hourly, which that's obvious, a flex time is for hourly, which is obvious. The, the two sections that I kinda just wanna address because, um, it'll make it clear for everybody, our means salary, Karen doing the payroll is the vacation leave and the sick leave. Right now, we don't specify, we give vacation and sick leave, everybody gets it, you know, whether you're salary or hourly, but we don't specify when, um, obviously hourly people use it whenever they gotta be up work, because if they're off work, they're clocked out and the only way to get paid is use the vacation or sick leave, that's what it's there for. Um, if you're going to the doctor's appointment, you use your sick leave or whatnot. Um, but for salary, you know, they, they come and go and this basically states, you know, they get paid regardless and that, that's a given, you know, doesn't matter whether they're here for two hours a day or whether they're here for ten hours a day, they, they get, doesn't change the pay at all. But what would the city policy be as far as them using that leave versus just banking all those hours, you know? Um, right now, we don't have any guidelines that, um, say you come in for a day and, or you come in for one hour during the day and then the rest of the day, you're off on vacation or out of town. Are we gonna make them use vacation time for a part of that time, their vacation leave? Because the way our employee manual is set up is that if they don't use it and write it in, they get that paid out to them when they separate from the municipality or in the case of sick leave at the end of the year too, so. I don't know if you see where I'm going with this, you know, um, yeah. So, and, and I just put in suggestive wording, I said, you know, if, and from a regular day, which is, we have eight to five, it doesn't have anything to do with the four hours or after hours, during a regular day, if you're going for over two hours, I was thinking that's what appointment would be, but it can be three hours, four hours, whatever you guys wanna specify. If you're over so many hours, then you should be required to use vacation, if you're gone on vacation, or you should be required to use sick leave, if, if you're sick. But, um, like I said, I just clarify everything for, um, Karen doing payroll and for employee and the rest of staff, so. Like I said, it, it's basically a policy of the city, this doesn't change pay at all, they get paid regardless.
I personally think they should say four hours, not two hours.
Yeah, and it could be that a half day there.
Which is mine. I mean, you're gonna start, just from the time management on the professional EO, I think four hours is pretty standard for a salary individual.
I think that's half a day, so, you know.
Then at four hours, that takes time.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just look at it as like, you, it's pretty easy to get those hours, that four hours in, to make up that time. Anything over the four hours, then obviously I think you need to take vacations or have to.
Any other discussion bringing in or anything like that? I know we're having a hard time to make it on the last meeting because of internet connections and things, any other questions around?
Oh, yes, I'm, I, I don't know. My thoughts are to have one salary employee or had one salary, have one salary.
Yeah.
Would you say that's an issue that we have to address?
I think it's been an issue, yeah. And I did, and that's why, um, starting off now, like, it'd now be a good time to clarify so everybody's on the same page, you know.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, if you're hourly or salary, if you're taking time off for personal stuff, you're taking time off.
Correct, and that's why the vacation and sick leave is there, you, you're taking time off, but you know, if you were a salary though, if you're only going for an hour, but then you stay late an hour, I mean, you, you're not gonna make them draw from their leave for that one hour, but there should be a point in there where they do need to draw from it, cause if they never draw from it, then they'll keep building and building and they'll get it. So basically, they're getting paid for those hours through their salary, but then they get them paid out and at the end of the year as well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
How's that different than an hourly employee?
So an hourly employee, he go take a vacation day, you're clocked out, you don't get paid, you have to clock in or out and get paid for it.
Well, isn't there, uh, flex time? What is that?
That's through that week, um, if you have an extra half an hour one day or whatever, you can take off half hour early or whatever.
That week, yeah. So you don't, can't build it up at the end of the year and you don't get it paid out to you.
Okay, so if Craig works five eight hour days this week plus his time here, then he can leave earlier on Friday?
Yep.
Okay, but a salary employee can't, is what you're saying?
Well, they can, but.
So salary employees have flex time also, just like an hourly one?
Well, but you don't call flex time, I mean, that's what salary employees are, is like, maybe work within hours.
The example is, Gabe is sitting here tonight, he's a salary employee. He's gonna sit here for three hours. Craig can take three hours off early, but Gabe can't.
Well, he can, he can manage his time.
He can come in late tomorrow morning or he, yeah, exactly. He just manages his time, just like any other salary employee would.
So I see what you're getting at though, with the way it's written, with two hours, is if he takes, if he takes all three of those hours at the same time, he's out of compliance with, with this.
And should have.
And this could be four hours.
What you said to me, or what I heard, when you said it's been a problem, is I've never heard that it's been a problem until right now. You know, on employee reviews or anything like that, to me, my, but my recognition is we've never discussed it before.
And we haven't discussed it before. Um, Karen has asked previous employee several times, you know, you're, like I said, you're only here for an hour or two, but then the rest of the time you're out on vacation, like, do you wanna use it or not? And, and say, no, well then, upon separation, he got paid out a large check amount.
So there's no forms to fill out? So there's no forms to fill out, and you want to take sick time or vacation?
Yep, there is.
I think this, I think we're gonna, we want to be careful to not discuss personal issues in open meeting, but also, I think this provides clarification, and I don't know, I don't know if any of my employee manuals have ever specified it, but the direction has always been given as a salary employee is, if it's, if you're gonna be gone for hours or more for that day, you're taking half a day or a full day if you feel, you know, you're just, you're taking another if you feel. And I think usually that's pretty understood, but if you don't have something written down, it opens up the door to be taken advantage of, and so.
Yeah, and that's, I just want to clarify going forward, so, you know.
At what point can we discuss this? An executive session?
An executive session?
Okay, you know, I mean, at what point is it open meeting versus executive session, because we're right along.
I think, I think when we start talking about a specific employee, that drops in line, more former employee.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion table.
Second. A motion second. A discussion on the table. O'Voy, Jones?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Vineser?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
You have one.
My hand? My hand. Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we move to the next. We've got updates and discussions on COVID-19, anything going on with that, so. Probably, I know Teresa on this, first part of it is, maybe we'll just start in order to the buildings, any updates on how you'd like to walk through any of the COVID-19 pieces?
So if we're looking at opening stuff up, talked with staff, we thought about it a little bit. I had the guy, we definitely wouldn't screening at the front counter when they come into Rhonda. I'd like to rope off the hallway and direct everyone just to the front counter first, so they make sure people are checking in, and just not walking around the building. And then depending on what they're there for, what they need to see, you know, we can let them back or come up and get them, but if we rope off the hallway, and then direct them into the front counter, like I said, we can see what business they want, and then have a plexiglass screen there, like all the businesses are showing, where, you know, we can have at least a little bit of barrier protection there. But, you know, with those in place, I, I think, I don't see, I guess, an issue with opening up City Hall. I said, we haven't had a problem with anything, we've been able to do business, but it'd just be a little easier, you know, where we can help people right away as they're, they're here for it, so.
Makes sense.
So with that part of it. I don't think there's really a couple of, can't any issue with the other city buildings, like the shops or whatnot, they, they don't have the foot traffic, you know, the public coming in like we do here, so. Obviously, there's no issues there, I don't think any changes need to be done there, but with here, if we open it up, like I said, we'll just rope them to make sure they check in, see what, you know, who they want to see, or what they need to do, and then address that, and like I said, full of protection there, we'll keep one area that we have to keep sanitizing, instead of the whole place, and, and keep on top of that, so.
Can you get that done, Craig, this week?
It's already done.
Got it done?
We know at some point we're opening up.
Yeah, we, we borrowed them, barrier tapes, or whatever they're called, expanded ones from the school, they had some of those, we just got those. Now, but then we don't. We built that, finished that today, so.
Excellent. Teresa, you don't feel like you need one in your office?
I'm gonna shut my door.
Well, if somebody's coming in and visiting with you, how do you prevent that exchange?
Well, you know, I've got my desk as that buffer, I think that we can set my chairs back far enough that, yeah, that they would be right there, so. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm okay with that.
Try to make another one.
Hang it from the ceiling.
There you go.
Just a piece of tape on the ground, really, that's what you've seen a lot of places.
Yeah, and then, too, we could put Xs, especially if we got more than one person here at a time, you know, like you said, back them up with Xs, like you see at a lot of places, so.
Toy is.
Rhonda, you feel, feel pretty good with the process?
I'm getting it.
You're getting it?
I'll be the person who'll get it, if I need to, I'm talking to her. That opens him or later, so.
Feel kind of like a goldfish in there?
Kinda.
All right, and?
Dear.
Do we have an open date recommendation?
Up to you guys, I'd like, the, the guys can use the plexiglass, and we have the barrier, so.
About the 26th?
The Tuesday?
The 26th. At Kirkland Memorial Day.
I see a lot of businesses coming up to check in after Memorial Day.
That way you can get it in the vapor, if you get old Sarah.
That's true, yeah, we can get out a little bit, that on this day, we'll be clean up.
Sarah, you know who Sarah is. Sarah, the newspaper person.
All right, that looks good, I don't know that you need any motions there?
Nope, no, that's the direction, we'll shoot for that, then.
Thanks, Craig, for getting on that.
How much is a sheet of plexiglass this is?
We happen to have some Marty on our shelf.
Oh, he's a party.
Party.
I wonder how much he's got?
Use them in the park, you know, and bust those classic things up, so we'll just keep it on the air.
Got plexiglass everywhere, I bet.
Extra gloves.
Dang it, Craig, I didn't fuck that much.
If, if you guys need some, then I'd be glad to ask, I, I have some, so, just let me know.
That's good, thank you, that's good.
Don't ask me how I got.
You and your brother get together and buy a bunch?
Purchasing issue. Blank purchasing.
All right, with that, let's move to the pool. Talk a little bit about pool opening for 2020. We get together with Amy, and discuss some options and some things there.
Yep, so, yeah, I did sit down with Amy last week, and we talked about, okay, how can we open the pool, you know, what's possible, what staff we got? You know, the biggest thing is the staffing, because right now, I gotta go with what we have, and we have one manager and four lifeguards that could, you know, start right away. I have two more applicants for lifeguards, but they're not certified, and they can't get certified until after mid-June, later June, because MB, the Red Cross, isn't doing any certifications.
So if the city of Sioux Falls is closed, is there any way we can reach out to their lifeguards?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we can keep advertising. I'm sure there is, and we'll definitely keep advertising and looking for ones, but if we were to open right now, like I said, I got one manager and I got four lifeguards, so. This is fluid, and it can always change, but under that scenario, I talked about, well, how, how could we make the pool work if we were to open? So obviously, they all can't work, you always have to have a manager there, so Amy especially, can't work seven days a week, you know, all day, every day. So we have to cut down on the days of operation. We're suggesting every day except for Wednesday and Sunday, so that way it gives a weekend day, and then just one day during the week off, so. That's what we're suggesting, so there's five days a week going. The hours of operation, we're suggesting still having that morning session at 9:30 to 11:30, and letting daycares come in the morning, like they always have, we might have to do a little rearranging with, instead of daycares coming twice a week, maybe, one daycare, you come only once a week, just so we can, for capacity wise, not have so many kids there or whatnot, so. But Amy could work that out with the daycares, to have a schedule for them, and to at least work with the daycares to let them still come. I did put it on here, but we talked about, we wouldn't want to offer power hour, I just don't think we'd want the older, it's usually a lot of the older population coming, and they're just more vulnerable, so I don't know if we need to offer power hour, but, plus that takes away capacity from the daycare, so it's all the same time, too. So that's something. So then we always have afternoon sessions, like we have in the past, the one to five, that's open for everybody, and keep that the same, so we can have, and then look at doing no evenings, though, just because of, like I said, all the hours that the lifeguards and the manager would have to work. That's a way we could, you know, start it up right away, and, and as we get more lifeguards, or more, if we get more managers, we can, you know, expand it, but. And then we're talking about, you know, of course, we'd have to look at capacity, reduce the capacity, because, you know, you got one manager there that's always gonna be at the counter, you'll have two life- if we have a capacity of the 50, it's one lifeguard for every 25 kids, so if we have two lifeguards watching the pool, that's your 50 kids there. You'd also, you'd have to have another lifeguard, or a third one, probably in rotation, what they did is do concessions and cleaning, and, you know, they're not watching the water, so that's our, three of our lifeguards right away. Obviously, somebody's gonna need a day off somewhere, so I think you're only gonna be able to employ three right away, you know, per day. And then that fourth one will, you know, work a day that somebody else can't work. So we're thinking, you know, limiting the capacity 50 for now, unless we get more lifeguards.
And it's the Red Cross that certifies them for lifeguards?
They go through MB, it's the Red Cross program.
Yeah.
Yep, and MB is the one who offers the certification. And then, and Ryan there says they're looking probably mid-June to start the certifications free up, so then they take a week class, or it's like a three-day, I think, training thing, so. By later part of June, we could probably get the ones that aren't certified, you know? If we could find lifeguards that are unemployed now, and already certified, great, but.
I would think there's quite a few of them out there.
Well, you know, got Sioux Falls isn't open, T isn't, Dell's isn't, and.
We need to evaluate our pace, because I don't convince them to drive to Hartford, though.
Yeah, that's true.
These are all pretty new occurrences in those communities, so I think, I haven't even looked yet, you know?
I'm worried, oh, there's this pool of people. How do you advise them to drive to Hartford?
Come on over, right, right.
Just the other suggestion is that pool parties, they'll have to submit an application like they would any other time, and the manager will just have to either prove it based on if we have lifeguards or not, so that'll be the same procedure as previous years. Swim passes, we're kind of suggesting not to have swim passes this year if we open it up, just because we have limited days, limited hours. I don't want somebody with a swim pass to, to come to the pool one day, and, oh, we're at capacity, and we gotta turn you away, and then get upset, well, I bought a season pass.
That's happened.
Yeah, and I can't get in, and then I don't know how you figure out, well, what is that pass worth with the limited days and number? Because I'm sure we're gonna be changing this, as like I said, we get more lifeguards, or things change. So, you know, it'd just be the simplest, we thought it'd pay as you go, come in, pay as you go, and. That way, too, we want everybody to check in, put their name and a contact number, in case we did have an outbreak, we can give it to the health department. They have to sign in. Concessions would be just the same as, I mean, you're taking money for coming in, you'd be selling concessions like you would before. We'd have to implement additional signage, we'd have to probably do something with the loungers, you know, pick up some, make sure they're spaced out. We'd have to do, of course, more disinfecting, cleaning, have somebody kind of on top of that, so. Once we put plexiglass there, I mean, we'll have to just implement measures for social distancing and disinfecting, and not to open it, but, you know. Amy would like to open the pool, I mean, I think we could get it open, and then, like you said, this is a fluid situation, as we hire more people, and as things change, we can start opening it up more.
How much is a pass?
Thirty dollars for a single, and 60 for a family.
So why would you not offer?
Well, I just don't want somebody to complain, well, I bought a season pass, and now you're, you're only open five days a week, and not seven, and I can only come in the evenings, and you're not open.
We post the hours and the risks?
Yeah, I do.
I mean.
I buy a gym membership, I never use.
Yeah.
Well, there you go, Amy.
No, I mean.
I mean, we can offer it, but it just.
Personally, I, I think that'd be, if I want to buy one, I'd buy one, that's my choice, that's my money. And the risk of not getting in? That's my problem. Everybody, everybody sees them tickets to the races, and not make the own, there's a reason.
Well, you could, you could put some kind of disclaimer on them, saying that because of everything going on, that the hours may not be like they normally are, so as long as you have a disclaimer on it, that they're buying.
It has to be posted, just they may not get in for capacity or whatever.
Exactly.
I would only sell season passes, and I would eliminate the concessions, that you don't have to, that you don't have to handle any money.
So just do strictly season passes, and no daily pay?
Yeah.
Well.
That'd be my opinion.
No, because then you got somebody that's having kids on vacation, coming through for one day in the weekend, and, and so, o- okay. So you got somebody coming in from Washington State to spend a weekend, right? They have kids, and the family here has a pass, but the kids who are the same age as your cousins want to go swimming with their cousins, but you're saying, if we do it that way, they have to buy a pass for one day.
Or go to Wild Water once.
Okay.
It's a special, it's a one.
I mean, just suggestions, so, but.
Yeah, just an idea.
How, can I ask how we are recruiting lifeguards?
We've been advertising, we haven't, when COVID hit, boom, it's been postponed, but, well, we sent it to the schools before, with, obviously, no way of giving that school newspaper, on our website, the shopper that goes out to all the areas, towns here, with the.
I'm just wondering, like, the biggest area, y'all are probably, there's my southern accent, no. I think what I'm thinking about where to post it at, where a lot of people see that, is it your Facebook or your Cali?
Oh, we've done that, Facebook.
But is it sponsored through the managed jobs tab, and you boost it? I'm betting Gabe's having a. Okay, he's like, how do you pull that? I'm just, if you're starting in that specific area, like that age group, I think that's the way we're gonna have to go.
She's showing her age.
Yeah, and, and there's been, there's been a pause on advertising, it, you know, a pause on, because until somebody, until you make a decision or a motion on this, there is, we don't have a pool open, so.
Well, we need a motion. Can I throw in my two cents? Did anybody go look at the CDC guidelines for pools?
Not very closely, because it's government regulation.
Don't, yeah, I, I'm telling you, the CDC guidelines, I don't even know why they posted them, they shouldn't have just said, you shouldn't open up, because that's basically what they, what they're saying.
Well, and the additional information I put in there from our insurance company, basically, that's what it said, CDC guidelines, basically. Pools don't follow them, kind of, but I mean.
We had said at one of our meetings, maybe the last meeting, that we were gonna look at this in June. Right? I'm not trying to play the down-the-road, and, but we know this thing is fluid, as you cannot believe. Do we need to, if we were intending to make this, have this discussion, or make this decision in June, what is this thing gonna look like in two more weeks? That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying. This thing can really change in two weeks, because it's fluid right now.
Do you think, do you have what our decision was at that point, when we started, when we had our first COVID-19 July? And what was the?
It was to wait till June and look at a July opening, because I had called all the applicants to say, okay, here's where we're at, and I'll keep you posted, we'll revisit this in June, and hopefully, we can get something open in July. Just to let them know, and keep on.
And why don't we get aggressive on the lifeguard situation? See if we can find more applicants, or qualified people. Our first meeting in June is June 1st.
June 1st?
And June 2nd, anyway. So give us time to find people, adjust with what's going on.
Better polls, maybe? To Arden's point, this thing is fluid, in two weeks, if there's a problem, we'll know about it, because quarantine is due. Right? If, if there's something brewing, in two weeks, the numbers will change pretty dramatically.
I have a question.
We'd have you come up to the board, and make sure you say your name for this.
Hi, I'm Bobby Lingert.
Hi, I'm Bobby Lingert, um, parenting, we live out by Wild Lake, but we're always in town. My question is, if we go with Travis's ideal of a season pass, which I would have no problem, I have my daughter's season pass. Two questions on it, though, with more lifeguards, there is a potential of opening it at night, right?
Oh, yeah, you could expand your days and hours a little more.
Okay, because that's when we would go is at night, because I'm working from home, I can't run her to the pool during the day, that far away. Um, second, my concern is with all these pools not opening, if we went the route of Travis doing the season pass, which I kinda like, if this would be a, like a sidebar to it, that that is only open to Hartford and Humboldt, say, are the small towns right around here. Because I would hate to, our residents, their children, buy these season passes. Now, somebody comes from Sioux Falls, you know, group of teenagers is what I'm looking at, a group of teenagers coming because they have nothing else to do. And don't wanna go to Wildwater West, which I understand like a one, but, um, those buying the season passes, now you're really limiting the area residents from being able to access this pool. If we go that route of, of opening it up to, you know, I grew up in Sioux Falls, that's gonna be a big thing. If these little towns open, these people are gonna be coming, and that's gonna push our residents out.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I follow the minutes, four twenty-one. Uh, here's what it says, "Pool, the consensus, consensus of the council is that pool remains closed remain June, revisit in June to see, to see if we are able to open in July. Pool manager has been hired and will remain on doing other duties as assigned." That's what we said on April twenty-first.
And we can change that?
Absolutely, I'm just, we, it was mentioned, I just wanted.
That's good.
I knew that we had done it, I just wanted to find it.
Well, and I, I agree that Hartford and Humboldt residents should, should be priority. But I think that the opportunity for Hartford's, uh, pool system to probably make more money during the summer, because of the fact you're gonna have other people coming here if everybody else is closed. To me, it's just fear and propaganda that's been this whole COVID thing. I mean, and, and everybody has the right to use the pool, plus, the fact is, is that everybody's got kids home. My, my friend's got kids here that has moved here now, and it would be a great opportunity for them to be able to use the pool. Kids that are bored, yeah, get, get into other things. And if you don't open the pool, here's my concern, is that kids will find other things to do that are not so, so good for our community. That's when the vandalism and everything else starts, is when kids don't have something to do for the summer. These kids have been confined all, all this whole time, homeschooling, they need an out. Not only that, the sun kills the virus, I've been reading up on it. And, um, once the, the temperature hits eighty degrees, this thing is gonna disappear. Because of the fact that this virus can't live above eighty degrees. Once our summer hits, it will disappear, it will just all vanish. Because we'll have no numbers, because even the most sickest people, you get enough vitamin D from the sun, it's not gonna be an issue. The main problem we have is we don't have enough vitamins in our system to fight the virus that's coming through. Okay, and that's why the older people are more, more prevalent to that. But, I mean, and my main concern is that everybody has a constitutional right, especially the Hartford residents that pay for the pool through their tax dollars and everything, and have the right to use it. Now, those that don't wanna use it have the choice of not going, not paying, not getting into the pool. But, um, that's why I came here was just because I felt that, that we should open the pool and that we should not hold back and have this fear prevent the city from opening a pool that normally would be open. I grew up in that pool, I mean, I remember taking lessons and I was five years old in that pool. I mean, and not that I use it anymore really, because I mean, I'm an adult and I have other things to do. But I think that it's a great thing for kids, learning how to swim and everything else. I mean, the thing is, is that our fear is gonna override other things that are gonna happen. And, um, if you guys can get some great lifeguards from the other communities to come and so that you can have enough people to, to staff the pool, that would be great. Um, you know, staffing isn't really the only problem with opening. You know, the CDC guidelines are, are BS anyway, I mean, the CDC doesn't necessarily care about your normal communities. And that's why I felt I had to come here tonight, was just to step up and say, hey, let's remind us of the Constitution of the United States, everybody has the right to use stuff that we've already paid for. And, I mean, um, if people don't wanna go to the pool and think it's a, a risk, then they don't have to, you know, do that. But I do think it's a great idea, sell the, you know, sell the things for the, um, the season passes to just people in the Hartford and Humboldt community. Anybody else must buy the day pass or have a day pass available for them to buy. And, and that solves anybody else coming from other areas into the pool. If they create problems, you kick them out, that's, that's the way it goes. So, I mean, you know, teenagers will do that. But there's all, they can, they can create less problems in a pool than they can create elsewhere doing other things, so. That's mainly why I came here, was just to make sure that, you know, um, that the public does have the right to use the pool and that we should not close it just because of this COVID. Which I don't think you guys are going that direction, and I'm happy to see that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I do think, um, we also have, Gabby, are you still online?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, um, I'm gonna come to you in just a second, Gabby, because I know you've been waiting and you had, you wanted to speak on this, these two. But, um, no matter what we do, just, just consensus, kinda going on a table, we're not voting on anything here, but is it, is it the view of the council that we want to get the floor? Sooner than later?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Anyway, I'm just, I mean, I, I agree, I think that the main thing is we wanna get this thing open, open safely. We get more lifeguards, and we're in even better shape.
When do we try to open normally in this period?
Basically, so it's like, you know, third week of May, whenever it likes to be.
Yeah. Very close, yeah, yeah. Um, Gabby, anything you'd like to, to add?
Um, you know, I, I sent everyone an email with my thoughts on the pool. Um, I don't wanna take up too much time, I'm, you know, one hundred percent in favor of opening the pool. And I'm speaking not on behalf of the Hartford team right now, I'm speaking on behalf of them as a concern to the city. But kids that need an outlet, like was mentioned before, um, but I think from, I've read the CDC guidelines, I think they're very broad. And I think that it's basically the same thing that we've heard before, wash your hands, do your best to keep things sanitized, so forth. Um, a few thoughts on the discussion tonight that's already been had. I would be in favor of buying my children a pool pass or buying a family pass, I would hope you guys wouldn't take that away. It's just easier than sending money with them and the last money exchanged between patrons and the pool staffs better. However, we think there, as mentioned, there needs to be a means for visitors to be able to utilize the pool if you don't have a pool pass. So I think doing both is probably a good bet. Um, as far as employment goes, I hire a lot of people. And I, I would suggest now is your best time to hire people if all these other pools are, um, closing. I've done a quick search here while you guys were talking on lifeguards. Looks like Lenox is the only pool right now advertising for lifeguards, um, on talent and employment. And so I think with Sioux Falls being closed, now is an opportune time for you guys to advertise on talent and or, you know, on number R. You get some lifeguards and be careful of lifeguards that are without employment right now. If you guys wait and drag your feet, um, on opening the pool, it may discourage some people or to apply. Or they may need employment now versus in July, if you guys wait to open the pool in July, you may not have as good of applicant pool. So, um, and then I, the only other thing I put in my email was, you know, put some ownership back on the patrons. I, I think this needs to be, it's not just up to the city to make sure the pool is safe. Um, I think it's up to everyone that utilizes the pool to follow whatever guidelines that you guys think is in the best interest of the public. Um, and I think it's fine to post that or have us all initial off on the checklist or, you know, a piece of data that say, hey, if you're gonna utilize this pool, this is what we need you to do to keep, to keep us safe, if you think that's necessary. Um, I don't think that, you know, we should just leave it up to the city to keep us safe and everything's fantastic. I think the patrons should have some ownership and, and making sure we can keep the pool open and keep it open safely. So those are my thoughts on the pool.
Awesome, thank you, Gabby. All right. Any further discussion, more direction? You have any more that we can come up? Mark Franklin's suggestion was, look, put it on and, and see what we can get going between now and June first and see if we can get some more people hired, which might modify that plan. And, um, yeah, I'd love to see us, I'm like, the full, full open after June, I think, or partial open, depending on what's, what we can do.
So I mean, we're gonna be advertising for help tomorrow?
That's what it sounds like. Start advertising for help and then.
Have you called it, right? Wish I had my certification.
We haven't done anything with it, um, we have a washer thing, and it's gonna take us, like you said, me and Teresa were talking about this earlier. I said we could probably get it open by June first, but it doesn't sound like we'll be ready by then anyway. Um, so I mean, we'll start on it now and we'll have it ready, so whatever, you guys decide to. So we're just gonna do.
I was like, could be ready by June second, though.
We can have it up by June first.
Is, 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 is Sioux Falls schools, pools are closed entirely for the rest of the year?
Sioux Falls, Sioux Falls, Brandon, T, and Dell's.
This would be the one year we could actually make money on our pool if we get more than fifty people in. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
It's big time in the.
You just won't use as much.
Pools do not make money, we don't have, we know that. Pools do not make money, but, but, uh.
They can lose less.
We may lose less, yeah, there you go.
And it would keep parents happy.
Well, we'll go ahead and start there if that's consensus, we'll start getting ready, so.
Teresa, the one thing I wanna throw in there is the additional signage on CDC. Anything and everything we put out there, I mean, capacity of fifty, uh, I've put it on everything because we've had that issue at a hundred-plus where people were mad that they couldn't get in. Yeah, you know.
I'm taking phone calls.
Yes, you have, and so, I mean, just really saturate that, that, you know, first come, first served, uh, fifty max, and that's not much, if you think about it, so.
And if we get more lifeguards, like I said, we can expand that, but it, it's one lifeguard for every twenty-five.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'd love, love where you go with it, Teresa, I think that, um, we're a lot farther along than we thought we'd be at this point. When you look at what, what our feeling was at the end of April, twenty of those minutes.
Yeah, I think two weeks is gonna be a, I, I'm not much of a kick down the can, get kicked the road, kick the can down the road. But this case, maybe the two weeks will be a, could be a benefit.
You're not much of a swimmer either, though.
I'm not much of a swimmer. I swim happy, so to speak.
Next item, we're gonna keep moving, organized sports. Um, I think we got some folks to talk about that a little bit tonight, do you have any background, do you wanna set anything up, Teresa?
Um, basically, you know, what I put in your packet, um, the Hartford Softball Association, uh, basically, I put in your packet, like I said, had put together a plan of how they would move forward with, you know, practices and games on the field. I read through it, I, I think it's a pretty good plan, you know, and it does implement, you know, those CDC guidelines as best you can as far as social distancing and putting extra precautions out there, so, um, yeah, they can maybe address it more. But, you know, I think it's a, I think it's, it's a good one to start out with and to get things going again for the.
Yeah, for sports.
For sports, yeah.
Eric Coonswyther, Hartford Area Softball.
Brian Kramer, Hartford Area Softball. So when we submitted this plan, uh, to Teresa to send out here pre-packets, we did this on our own using the CDC guidelines. And we've had weekly calls with USA Softball of South Dakota, who's our governing body here in South Dakota, um, along with several communities in the state, uh, talking about guidelines that we should have in our fields. Back to the field plan is what we call it. Um, and after we did ours, the national organization came out with a twenty-page document, back to the ballpark recommendation. Ours are more strict than theirs, so, there you go, that makes it feel any better. So, I know Teresa filled me in that as of right now, the fields can be used by anybody as long as it's not a, a group of ten or, or more. So what we're here to ask is for you to consider tonight to open it up, uh, fields wide open for practices. Generally, our teams only have twelve players anyway, with two or three coaches, you're not, I mean, you're talking fifteen or less. In our plan, parents aren't allowed to practice, it'll be closed. Um, once we get into games, you know, in phase two, we have a plan there to limit the fans. Uh, we have plans to hopefully live feed most of our games here in town. When we get into tournaments, we have a tournament scheduled for Jamboree Days weekend, which Jamboree Days got canceled. However, we do still have our tournament, tend to the league plan, uh. We, uh, are gonna keep the crowds down by only allowing three fans per player. So it would, it would be forty people or less per team at the fields. We would schedule them so there's, you know, in stage or time, so they're not all congregating at one, at one spot at the same time. I asked Teresa if the, since Carnival's not in town, that maybe we could utilize the two extra fields in town for the tournament a little bit further, even though, um, that social interaction is more. And, you know, a lot of the rationale from downtown Hartford that they have at their event, I mean, you're outside in the open air. I think it's a, a lot different than being in a gym with two hundred people.
Yeah, the main thing's in the plans is just practice social distancing, you know, not getting the kids together in the dugout, spreading kids out, spreading the fans out, having sanitizer there, all the coaches and teams, you know, having sanitizer available. Um, I guess one thing about the tournament, we wanna just kinda get what your feeling is on that, since Jamboree Days is canceled. Um, a lot of tournaments around the state are being canceled. Um, so we're, we're actually getting more teams that are interested in playing. We feel like we have a, a great plan that we can make it safe for everyone. So, I mean, we wanna move forward, but we just kinda want to see what you guys feel about that.
One more note on that tournament, so we've always had a cap of six teams per field up at Swenson Sports Complex. Uh, right now, we have ten interested twelve-view teams and six interested fourteen-view teams. So we're already over what we planned on originally, but also having the two fields in town.
Are you expanding days, trying to still run it on Saturday, Sunday, or are you gonna start Friday?
We would do a Friday night, get, get some games out of the way, it'll be Friday.
Well, I'm on board one hundred percent. I mean, uh, let's say that, uh, I, I've shared settlements, I think a lot of people here is that, um, if you look at it negatively, it's gonna be that way. And I think everyone, everyone's been bombarded with this to the point of nauseam. Um, so I'm gonna support you a hundred percent on that, uh, with the stipulation that any and all people, that, coaches or mainly, that maximum of three per player, that somehow has to be hammered home really hard. Uh, uh, so, I, could you expand on that just a little bit? I mean, how would your, um, because I didn't see anything in here that said, outside of the coaches saying, hey, your mom, dad, and sister can come, but your little brother's gotta stay home, I mean, it's little scenarios like that.
Tournaments are super easy, so what we do is we'll communicate directly with the coaches, we'll send them three wristbands per player. So to get into the complex, they have to have a wristband, that's pretty simple. League is gonna be a little bit more difficult, that's where Hart and Berry Softball is gonna have to, like you said, hammer it home. Uh, we'll have meetings with our coaches, uh, making sure that they know what the rules are, that they need to follow them, that it's mandatory they follow them. And they will be also, uh, responsible to make sure that, you know, we limit the fans at the complexes, especially vulnerable, vulnerable population. Cause of grandpas and grandos and.
The sanitizer and whatnot, is that something you wanna see the, the city provide, or is that something each team's gonna be responsible for?
It's like you're.
We can't get sanitizer.
We can't get it.
You don't have that.
I've, I've ordered some of my.
We have some on the back order, we have wipes on the back order, we have.
That answers our question.
So I know, uh, Sunshines have plenty of, I mean, I've been in there quite a few times, they have gallon jugs.
Yeah.
For sale, I don't know.
Handles, hand sanitizer.
Yep.
Don't taste for you.
So we would take, uh, some support there if you're willing to provide it, otherwise, we'll figure something else out there, too.
I've got an abundance of N ninety-five masks, not my.
What's with your mask, Travis?
You know, that's an important point for.
It's one man buy.
So our tournaments are usually a huge, not a huge moneymaker, but that's how we make a living, Hartford Area Softball. That's how we survive. And you know, we've had some pretty big projects this year at the scoreboard in town, which thank you for your support on those.
Do they work?
They work.
They uh.
Good investment, Travis.
But uh, you know, I think we're gonna have those that aren't comfortable playing. There's gonna be quite a few that drop out. We've discussed maybe eliminating younger kids uh this year, just uh it's harder to socially distance on that major. I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, limiting the fans at these tournaments are gonna hurt us financially too, so we would appreciate any support that we can get. I mean, even if it's paying sanitizer.
Yeah, so we will be asking all parents, you know, if they're gonna be comfortable playing and offering them, you know, refunds uh cause they've all paid league fees. And uh so we'll have to do some shuffling around with teams, and then they will all sign a waiver uh that USA Softball heads out, you know, that they know the risk of of what's going on this summer.
Like I say, our insurance company too just sent out today um a suggestive waiver for the COVID, so you might need, I might need to get that to you too, have them sign that as well. I just got it today.
So this twenty-page document has a six-page waiver in it? Wow.
I think the insurance is only two pages.
Well, I, I'll just, my opinion on it is, I think you guys have a, I think you have a really good plan. Getting on, got good handle on things. We're one month out from the third weekend in June, so the tournaments, you know, just around the corner. I don't, I don't foresee that you're gonna have any issues, but I think it's always just good to know on the back of your mind that if everything blows up, that it could blow up. And I think everybody, everybody's pretty, pretty used to that right now, but the way we're sitting right now. I personally, I'm not speaking for all council, but I feel like you have a good plan. I'd say move forward with it.
Teresa, you seen this, obviously? Yeah, and it still concerns your your heart and sense for this.
Well, unless, and then I reach out to our insurance, say, what are you doing? And they mostly just have them sign waivers that have COVID language in it that that they're aware of, but that thinks, um, but yeah, no, I, that's a pretty good plan too. They got, you know, some good guidelines.
So are we talking about opening the ball di'ms in general, or just to this organization? Great questions, good questions.
Church league or beer leagues?
I wouldn't support opening up to any organization that puts the time and energy into creating the document that will stipulate how they're gonna keep the their participants safe.
So and then just to clarify, if kids can play on the playground equipment, but not play with a ball on the ball field or something like that?
An organized law would need to prove that, I think, where it's just to keep their participants safe, in my opinion. In that example, now that'd be awesome to see. There's ten kids out.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, there's, where do we draw that line?
Well, you can.
I thought you said that.
Yeah, they just can't organize.
Yeah, so we told all of our teams, no organized practices, no organized teams. But yeah, there's kids up there, you know, a couple of kids playing ball. I mean, it's. Okay, I misunderstood the intent, I guess.
I know.
What we were doing with the diamonds before tonight. I thought they were closed off.
No, they they're open, just like the parks are open. It just.
Yeah, and I agree. It's gonna be organized and they need to.
I say, I know, I know some cities are are doing just this, making the organization bring a plan to the council. And if the plan is approved, then they can afford with it, so. So I would think like the soccer association would should bring something by Ford if you want for review and church league and like you said.
Really, the only rumblings I hear in the community is why show favoritism to a long group over another. But in in our defense and in the support of you, you've been very active in finding a way to make it work versus waiting for somebody to tell you what to do.
Right.
So kudos to you guys.
So guys, your your phase one is June third. Is that kind of your kickoff date, or are you looking to go earlier, or what's your?
We would like you to consider opening it up for practices tomorrow.
It does not say that in here, right?
No.
It says your plan changed.
It says June third, yeah.
That's why I asked that question, cause I hear you.
We uh we originally planned to come here on June second, so that's why.
Oh, I see. Okay.
I think something like this would be good to have in Washington, something along the lines of um any organized sports that come forward with a plan. On review of that plan, we would open up organized practice and and or use the fields.
Is that a decision the city staff will make or council? So I know where I'm at.
I know where I'm at.
We've got a template.
With the, I mean, cause otherwise, they gotta go every two weeks, you know, we're gonna be talking about this at every meeting.
These guys could pay for their sanitizer, sell them their plan.
Yeah. Copyrighted.
What's the policy? I mean, are we still using the uh Google Doc for scheduling practices then?
Yeah, so interestingly enough, um most of our teams have scheduled practices. We've had games scheduled. I've heard nothing from any other organization. I mean, I've had a wedding that wanted to be like getting married, I won't believe. Have nothing from baseball or church league or your league or anything. Nothing.
So there is a doc out there and it's on the city page and our page where they can request a time and then they can see who's on the field and that's what it goes with. And it's all of our teams right now, so.
So before I make the motion, are you are you saying, are you on board where if baseball comes uh to us like you guys are and if church league comes to us like you, you like prefer it that way, or are you?
Come to the city.
Come to the city.
At city council.
Okay. Let me choose on that. Well, let's do this then. I'll I'll make a motion to approve the return of the fields plan uh presented by the Hartford Area Softball Association and to effectively start practices May twenty-sixth.
Tomorrow?
No.
That's a week from today.
It's not tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
Do we have a second? Anybody need to hear the motion again?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion.
May twenty-sixth.
You wanna go tomorrow?
They do.
I saw you move it, uh the the bleachers don't matter. Okay. Sure. Okay, um. So I'll amend my motion and approve the plan, Hartford Area Softball Association, effective tomorrow.
Sorry. Any other discussion?
This is specific only to people that, is there a membership here, Hartford Area Softball Association?
Yes. This doesn't refer to other groups, which we could capture with another motion.
That's right. Yeah.
All right, no more discussion. We'll vote. Jones?
Want to make a motion, Jeremy?
You gonna hear the motion again?
Yeah, please.
Go ahead, Scott.
Motion is to approve the return to the fields plan presented by the Hartford Area Softball Association, allowing them to start practice tomorrow. Uh what is tomorrow? May twenty, May twenty.
All right.
All right, we'll vote. Jones?
I'll still say yes.
Franklin?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yeah.
Okay, do another motion. For how we handle future pieces and is, is any feedback from staff on that? Where are we in the I S L?
I'm good with looking at plans and except they have good guidelines or don't like, you know, been presented here tonight, I don't see why they can't start either. Don't they have an agreement in plan?
Yeah, I wish they had a plan. Other organized groups want to use city parks, well, in fields that they are, that they're allowed to contingent, that they have a um plan uh similar to timeout.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Almost got a motion about that.
Can't we use this as the template? Saying, you wanna have a church leave? Here's our guidelines that you need to follow.
Which we should ask them to fill out.
That's plagiarism.
Yeah, I'm saying like.
Arden Jones.
I got him thinking now.
I think he gives a twenty page job the internet.
You know, we'll have this posted to our website. They can get on there and use what they want. But I guess the point is, it's almost like a permit. They come in and say, we wanna have our leave, whatever it is. Teresa can say, you can fill out this form and like a building permit, right? I mean, here's the.
I'll keep it simple. A motion to approve any other organized groups that want to return to the fields to use the template as presented by the Hartford Area Softball Association.
Same.
You'll have to ask the other groups for sanitizer.
All right, any other discussion? Monahan, did you hear all of that?
I got both the.
Mainly that uh other groups can can come in as long as they use that plan from Hartford Area Sports and Rec as a as a template.
Yeah.
Softball Association, sorry. All right, no more discussion. We'll vote. Franklin?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yeah.
Nice job, guys. Really, nice job. This, that was really good. Yeah, you're hurting us. We don't like being nice to you guys. It's not good. It's not in our nature.
Anything for correspondence?
I don't have anything. I don't know if you wanna visit at all with the Sam Athens request. There was a letter submitted to the city this morning from his engineer. Um it's it's in your additional information, cause I just got it today with the request, so I don't know if you wanna visit, want to or not, but just wanted to make sure everyone saw that.
I I would appreciate some background on why we do it the way we do and and then Mitch, his letter, or Craig, is that legit?
Kind of, um I haven't seen the letter, but uh first lift, second lift the next year, it's kind of something we put in place quite a few years ago. It's one of those things that I, okay, um I really like to do it that way, um for the fact that it gets a chance through the first lift more than one year, and you'll find if there's weak spots in it, um in these developments, cause a lot of these developments we're getting better at having somebody there all the time inspecting them, but you know, years ago, we just kind of spot checked them and stuff like that. With that first lift, you know, the first year and the second lift next year, you're you're finding your weak spots. You're, if you have a soft spot or a trench that would happen to settle a bit, that's showing up. They have to get those spots fixed before they put the top lift on. And you're getting a lot better road out of it, better quality street. If you put the first lift down, the second lift down when he's making roads like that, that four-inch mass ball is gonna hold up to a lot of abuse underneath the, you know, your subbase that's not perfect, that's it's gonna hide it for a long time, or not a long time, four or five years, then they're gonna start to bust up. And they're gonna be back to fixing the road. Our roads that we've got in town now that we've done, you know, under city and that are under engineer inspections, you know, most of our roads are, besides, you know, the new stuff we've done, a lot of our roads are twenty years old and they're holding up pretty well. You go to Sioux Falls to their new developments that are from three years old, their roads are junk. They're just falling apart. Well, they're, they're not inspected, they're doing the first lift, the second lift the same year, they're just going through and whipping it out and you have it done with. You know, and and they could talk about um what they give you a longer extension on the warranty and stuff like that. Well, if it's, if they give you a two-year instead of a one-year warranty on the street, we're still getting that two-year warranty on the first lift one year, second lift next year, cause the warranty starts after that second lift's on, so we're actually getting a two-year warranty out of the roads. I just, my personal feeling is that I like to leave it the way we got it and stick with it, so.
Mentioning roads, um I had trouble getting out this winter because Vandemar, uh we're on township and you guys had trouble with, I guess, getting your maintainers out on time. And I mean, I'd go two weeks without having anybody plow to my house on Vandemar. And I mean, I'm right past the city limits.
You can talk to township on that.
Yeah, uh so this isn't, the township is different? And do they need more equipment then? Because I mean, if I do get to the state level, I wanna know that because.
I think they needed an operator.
They were short an operator all.
Yeah, they got, they got a good.
They've got one, yeah.
They didn't have an operator.
They just, yeah, they've got an operator and all that's what.
Anyway, I was just wondering about that. Okay, but that's the township.
You live on north Vandemar?
Yeah.
They have their meetings on the same night hours are at the township building.
It was less than entertaining to come up Vandemar and see somebody stuck down that road nearly every night.
Oh, really?
I know, I, well, I gotta go.
I don't need to discuss the road any further, I guess, if, I'm, Craig, I'm gonna change it. I'm not real, you know.
My only comment to Craig's point is, I would like to see our ordinance reflect some some subdivisions that have the crews roll in Thursday night, maybe Friday, do their work Friday, Saturday, without getting inspections. So what do you tell them?
That's, we've been pushing and working on that, Mitch, we could send letters, these guys tell them that they have to notify, what, forty-eight hours, twenty-four hours?
Well, I mean, just when they come in with a subdivision, they are signing a construction agreement with you guys. And that's actually what the request is tonight, is to amend the construction agreement that they have in place already with you. They've already agreed contractually, really, with you guys to follow these rules and practices. And inside there is, you call for an inspection, you know, when when you're required.
Right.
So that onerous is on them to make that call to us and we do the best we can. When we, when we're out here, we go through the subdivision, see if we see any work happening. Craig is always kind of keeping an eye on things if he's, usually it's Craig seeing something and we find out from Craig that we need to get older who might be doing the work out there.
With all seriousness, we pretty much hit everything they discussed.
They wanna amend our current ordinance, so to give them, what, more latitude?
No.
Like we've said, is they've signed a construction agreement that says they're gonna do one layer one year, the second one. So they want the city council basically to waive that so they can do both layers in one year. So yeah, they want a waiver from the construction agreement.
Do we have any action?
To that point, I would say that the only place where I can say that bit us is at the corner of Opal and Brew. Second lift split.
Yep, that's one of those, uh nine years ago or whatever it was, it was one of those things that came down a weekend and they've been occupied a month and had it done before. And that's, that's what happens, what I said, we've been really trying to keep on top of them to.
Yeah, and then.
Give us notification.
And then all the, all the subdivisions that we've done, we've had good performance out of the roads. That at one instance is probably the one time we've seen that occurrence.
Yeah, if Craig were here asking for it, because it's gotta be a pain to plow, cause you've got that lift on the curb.
It's, can be a mess, so. But I I just feel we're getting a lot better roads and ours are lasting a lot better than a lot of towns are.
I have to say that I think the roads here, when I moved back here, I mean, compared to Rock City, your roads are really good, especially Hartford. I mean, Hartford has better roads than Sioux Falls does half the time.
We are gonna stick to one thing and I wanna go to executive. Councilman Glazer's last meeting tonight. She has been pledged to have on the council, she's been moving to a different ward, Stan City. but we can do a different ward, so she won't be able to serve in that, in that ward, in that opening anymore. So with that, I wanna take a minute to give her our certificate of appreciation. I don't know if we're allowed to shake hands, very much.
I have. Well, there you go.
There you go.
It's kinda bussy, and, like I said, last week on, or two weeks ago on the call, it's, it's not a goodbye, I know where each of you are at at all times, and I'll, I'll be back, just, and, and later day. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, man.
I wonder which ward she's moving to, oh, yeah, three.
You see a batter there, oh, wait, I do see a batter there.
All right, with that, thank you, and we'll be looking, we've had some discussions, um, we're looking at pulling that by appointment, um, here soon. So, some discussions there, so, with that, we'll be looking for a motion to go to executive session for legal and personnel.
Go.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can you go, Monahan?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you for your time. You did a good game.
We have a bill, though, yeah. I'm used to this. People are, I'm picking people out of here left and right.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. All right, the motion is second.
Okay, here's how this goes.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go, need to host.
Well, Brittany, don't be a stranger.